Okay. This is the Plan Commission meeting for Wednesday, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. My name is Chuck Martin. I want to welcome you to tonight's Plan Commission. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. The responsibilities of this body are to advise the Mayor Council and the Planning and Development Services Department on the adoption of long-range plans, policies, specific plans, and regulations that affect land use and development. All staff call roll, please.
Chair Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Gaff, absent. Commissioner Cassidy?
Here.
Commissioner Fink?
Here.
Commissioner McBride Olsen?
Here.
Commissioner Pafford?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Saylor Brown? Absent. Commissioner Wellitt?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz-Epinho?
Here.
And Commissioner Lucia?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to call item number two, Approval of Legal Action Report for March tenth, two thousand twenty-one. I'll take a motion for approval.
Please. I'll second.
That was Commissioner Fink. And then it was the second?
It was me, Lexi.
Sorry. I was the favorite recommended this item to Mayor Council, say aye.
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 I'll post a aye. Hearing none. Passes. Next item is item three, Medical and Adult Use Marijuana UDC Text Amendment. I guess I need to ask if anybody needs to recuse themselves, and if they do, they need to leave the meeting.
Commissioner Martin, I'd like to request to leave the meeting for a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that needs to leave the meeting? Or has a conference? Okay, I would like to now open this up for for the staff to make their presentation.
Well, and thank you, Chair Martin, thank you, Planning Commission. We really appreciate you letting us talk through this. So the item we're looking at here is item number three, it's medical and adult use marijuana. This is a review of proposed text amendments to the Unified Development Code in response to the recent passage of Proposition two oh seven related to adult use marijuana. And this is a public hearing. So start off with a bit of background on marijuana regulations in Tucson. So back in two thousand ten, the voters approved Proposition two oh three, which originally legalized the use of medical marijuana in Arizona. November twenty-third, two thousand ten, the mayor and council adopted medical marijuana zoning regulations. Those were primarily based off of a model ordinance that was created by the Arizona League of Cities that they had kind of set out for municipalities to put rules in place related to this. We have come back since then on a handful of occasions to make revisions related to this. So two thousand fourteen, we went back and looked at our cultivation regulations, and we removed the size limits in I one and I two zones to kind of encourage those kind of manufacturing and cultivation uses to go into more industrial places, which generally have more intense uses. In two thousand sixteen, we came back and we made some adjustments to the size dispensaries, and we adjusted some of the setbacks for sports schools, for existing facilities back then. And then on January eighth, we came back and we, as many of you were on the commission at that time, we reviewed the sunset dates that was related to the medical marijuana amendment ordinance, and then had a couple amendments related to odor mitigation and lobby size. So at that time, mayor and council went through, voted seven zero for that, and that's kind of where we're at with our current regulations. Since then, in November, the proposition two oh seven, Arizona Proposition two oh seven, the Arizona Smart and Safe Act was passed by voters. This was statewide vote was about sixty percent. It actually was a little higher in Pima County, it was almost sixty-four percent or so that voted in favor of it. Some of the items related to this, there is limited possession, use, and cultivation by adults twenty-one and older, so it made adult use marijuana legal. A personal possession of six marijuana plants for a single-person household or twelve marijuana plants for a household of two or more. That was, is allowed through this regulation. That's actually one of those things that is regulated by the state and is allowed by the state. The preference for new licenses will be given to existing medical marijuana dispensaries. This has actually already happened. We had assumed that it would probably take longer until April or so. They actually started distributing those in January, and as of now, all of them in the state, all of the medical marijuana dispensaries have, appears have applied for it and have received their adult use license. Additional regulations and laws will be set up by Arizona Department of Health Services by April fifth. So they are, I believe they have finalized those laws at this point. They have additional laws that they will be working on, and I'll talk a little bit about that here in a couple slides. And then the two really key ones here are that new municipal adult use regulations shall be more restrictive than current medical marijuana, shall not be more restrictive than current medical marijuana regulations. So this does limit our ability to really regulate adult use marijuana as we move forward. And then the final one is that there are some additional licenses that will be distributed. Right now, that hundred and thirty for the whole state is based off of one per ten pharmacies in the state. And there is an additional twenty-six social equity licenses that will be distributed statewide. And those will go to underserved areas and applicants from communities disproportionately impacted by enforcement of marijuana laws. They're developing those laws right now. And then additionally, there will be additional licenses for counties that are underserved, and I'll show you kind of here how those fall. So ultimately, we have the nonprofit medical marijuana license, that was the original one. There are a hundred and thirty that are issued by Arizona Department of Health Services. Again, they're going to issue twelve new ones to underserved areas. So there are, if a county has zero or one license currently, they would be eligible to have an additional one or two licenses until they reach two. So a county like Cochise County currently has one dispensary. They will be issuing an additional license to that. They do need to remain in the place for at least a year before they can move. So you really, the impact on Tucson, potentially at some point, it could move into Tucson once you reach that time that they have to be in one place. But as of now, it wouldn't really affect too much as far as the new licenses that we may have. And then all those medical licenses may apply for adult use license, converting it to dual use, a dual use license. So they would be able to do medical and adult use. There is the medical marijuana establishment license, this is the adult use license. There are only twenty-six of these that are standalone adult use licenses, and those are through the social equity program. Again, they may not, the regulations related to this may not be more restrictive than medical. And there will be a set of criteria for achieving and receiving one of these licenses. And then finally, there's the dual use license, and really, all of those hundred and thirty that we had before, I had a hundred and twenty-eight, but I checked it before this meeting, and it actually went up to a hundred and thirty. And those have all been pretty much converted. So instead of, so now we have a hundred and thirty dual-use marijuana licenses within the city. Or not within the city, sorry, within the state. That is a pretty capped number. Again, the total number that we have here is based on one per ten pharmacies. And the last I have read, the number of pharmacies in the state is actually declining, which does limit the amount of growth really of new medical or dual-use dispensaries in the state. So social equity licenses, this is kind of one of those things that will be coming about. There will be twenty-six of these. The idea is, we're looking at probably two to maybe four of these that may be distributed within the city of Tucson. Arizona Department of Health Services currently drafting rules for the distribution of these licenses. There isn't really a timeline related to this. We've talked to Arizona Department of Health Services, and we've heard some talk about maybe, you know, the end of the year or something of that sort, but we're not entirely sure. And then once they establish those rules, they would begin accepting applications within six months of adopting those final rules. So it's a little ways out, but it's something they definitely have on their radar. Tucson's role really related to this, it's, again, a lot of these rules have been created either within Proposition two oh seven or are being created by the state. So our role is a little limited on these type of things. So during rulemaking, city may provide input to Arizona Department of Health Services on rules. So we're looking into figuring out ways to actually influence the process that way. Review sites for social equity applications for compliance with our zoning regulations, so make sure that they're meeting our zoning. Review proposals for construction documents, for codes, zoning building codes, things of that sort. And then we would be the ones that issue those building permits and those business licenses. I do know there are, the mayor's office and some other people are looking at potential ways to influence that process a little more, to kind of really help out the people of Tucson. But that is something that they are looking at currently. So what are other cities doing related to adult use? So there are, there's kind of two camps of cities that are doing things right now. Several communities have passed ordinance to restrict the adult use only. That is allowed, but you can't restrict necessarily dual use. So if you already have medical marijuana, you, it would still convert to dual use. But they're restricting those standalone adult use licenses, like the social equity license that we just talked about in the previous slide. Gilbert prohibited those, Oral Valley, Maexa, Chandler, Scottsdale have all limited dispensaries to dual use essentially. Phoenix, they went through and expanded their dispensary size from two thousand to five thousand square feet in anticipation of this. So this was in the fall. I believe they are looking at their code again to see if they can make additional changes. A place like Tempe recently went through, and they expanded their dispensary size from five thousand to ten thousand square feet. They added in a use related to industrial hemp as well when they did that. But they did not change their setback distances. So their setback distances are, will remain what they are. They're mostly, I think they're fifteen hundred feet setback from schools and some other things, and then a quarter mile from, I think, daycares and childcare centers and things of that sort. And then, you know, I've been talking with other municipalities. A lot of them are looking, kind of like we're doing, looking, reviewing their code. And most of them, because of how it was crafted and how the two oh seven was crafted, they really are beginning with their current medical regulations and seeing what needs to change essentially. So to date, some of the steps that we've taken related to this, so we've been working on it for a little while. September two thousand twenty, we held an initial mayor and council study session. So the initial concern was one Prop two oh seven, but even more so was, you know, COVID nineteen and the pandemic. And how do we address some of the social distancing issues? You have immunocompromised people who are going to dispensaries for their medication, and they're in constrained spaces, you know, constrained artificially, partially because of our code, but also just because, you know, retail businesses aren't always as big, and they're having more people come in and you have to spread out. So we looked into some COVID-related issues, discussed that with mayor and council, held a stakeholder meeting with dispensary owners to get an understanding of what issues they were seeing. At the time, they expressed to us that, one, they're seeing, they were seeing growth, year-over-year growth, and then the pandemic, there was additional growth on top of that. And then with that, it was causing a lot of issues related to social distancing. We had a handful of kind of temporary measures that we, that we kind of proposed and went out with them. So one of them was temporary use of drive-throughs, temporary use of additional space for lobbies, so people could wait in the lobby and social distance before they would come in. Not as much of an issue in the winter, but definitely an issue in the summer when, you know, you're, you know, people are queuing outside of some of these places, and it's a hundred and ten degrees out. And then we also, you know, we do allow for delivery, we allow for, we allow for curbside pickup and things of that sort. That does help with that type of thing. So we had a, then after that, we went back to mayor and council, proposed that to them, talked to them about it a bit. And then they also told us, you know, by that point, Proposition two oh seven had passed, they gave us some additional kind of guidance on moving forward with these text amendments that we have here related to adult use. So from there, we started the public process, we went and talked, held a second stakeholder meeting to talk about kind of what was needed related to, you know, as adult use comes in, what is needed. And then from there, we held a public meeting, there were eighty-nine people, attended the two sessions. We went through and reviewed potential changes to, you know, dispensary size, odor mitigation, manufacturing, just changes of definitions and things of that sort. And then a lot of it was really just talking about, you know, what is in this new bill, and how do we, how do we address it? And then from that, we had, last week, we held our study session with Planning Commission here and reviewed the proposal to address medical and adult use marijuana. Planning Commission at that meeting set this for a public hearing, and they asked staff to come back and provide two setback scenarios. One was the state mandated setbacks, which is the five hundred feet from schools. And then also look at adding a setback in, related to substance abuse facilities, and which you will see in the materials as well. So that mayor and council direction I talked a little bit about, they had some direction on September ninth. They said, you know, just kind of start engaging stakeholders. But then in November seventeenth, they had more kind of clear direction related to that. And basically, they said, you know, look into expanding the total allowed dispensary size allowed, you know, due to the concerns related to social distancing, COVID nineteen, and increased traffic, which is something that we talked about with, in both our public meetings and here. And then they said, you know, look and see what's happening in Phoenix area and use it as a guide, and then try to find something that's reasonable essentially, is what they told us. So we did hold those public meetings. Some of the feedback that we heard related to that, current maximum dispensary size of four thousand square feet. And then there's a five hundred square foot secured storage, I think it originated with that first model ordinance. Is this significant limitation on the needs that needs to be addressed? It's causing queuing issues outside, especially if you start to have two different uses. So if you expand your user base, you have more and more people. People were just kind of, we have experienced that with a lot of the dispensaries that have opened, you know, as far as the traffic issues related to that. We have heard from the public that current odor mitigation requirements are not effective, and that's something that we should look at. Standalone manufacturing use, it is defined in the Arizona Smart and Safe Act, but it is not defined in our code, and we need to look at that as well. And then we may want to look at changes to setback requirements with the Planning Commission. So this was something where actually, they had mentioned to us that the Planning Commission last time talked about, when we come back, we should, you know, talk about reducing some of those setback limits. So we went back, actually, I watched the video from the previous meeting that we had with us for the sunset date, and that was there. So we did come back to you with, based on that, with some of our proposals that we have. So the proposed amendments that we have in front of you are increasing the maximum size, the secure storage, odor mitigation. We, drive-throughs, this was something that was brought up by Ward Five and by the mayor and council. They told us to look into drive-throughs and see whether or not that's something that we should allow for this. Looking at different uses and definitions, making sure that aligns with Proposition two oh seven. And then reduce, and then looking at separation from sensitive uses to align more with how we treat alcohol establishments. So each of those, so the dispensary size is the first one. Four thousand square foot of total area is what is currently allowed for a medical marijuana dispensary or would be a dual use at this point. And five hundred square feet of total for a secure storage area. So our proposal that is in front of you is increasing that total floor size from four thousand to ten thousand. Initially, we had it at eight thousand. We didn't want to be back in front of you in, you know, six months after we realized that eight thousand just wasn't enough. So we added a little buffer, and it was in line with what Tempe was doing as well to allow for, you know, some of that additional space for the additional traffic that's coming in. And then removing the limit for secure storage, that was something, again, I think it was a remnant of some of those more restrictive uses or regulations that we had back when we were just kind of unsure as to what the impact would be related to medical marijuana and marijuana in general. The odor mitigation, this is a big one, and it's a really difficult one. So, and we've struggled with it, and I know, you know, people in the community have struggled with it as well. So we, our current regulations do require odor mitigation. We did in the past, we added it back in two thousand nineteen. And basically, it's saying that you have to have an odor mitigation plan and submit that, and it's based off really, you know, best practices. The problem with odor is just the fact that it's every, so in odor mitigation plan, essentially, every facility is different, so you need different techniques for every facility. So you can't have really strict technical standards on it. It needs to be flexible enough to allow for people to adequately mitigate odor. So that's kind of how we built it in. But the problem was, there really isn't much of an enforcement technique related to that, and it's very difficult to enforce. So this is kind of what we're struggling with. We went and looked at other municipalities, and we do want to get your feedback on this a bit. We went and looked at other municipalities, and there are some other municipalities that have pretty strict kind of enforcement and regulations related to this. In your proposal, the proposal in front of you, basically, we've added in more specificity to try to help with this. So we added in specificity as to what needs to be included in the odor mitigation plan, so make it more standardized essentially. And then we added in some procedures on how to deal with complaints. So the first one is inspection for adherence to plan and effectiveness. If there is a complaint, we would go out and inspect and make sure that it meets the intent of that, of the odor mitigation plan that they had submitted with their plan. So we would ensure that it meets that, if it doesn't, we would require them to go back and actually make sure that it does. So that would be the first one. Second one is certain amount of time for an operator to respond to deficiencies. And really, it's more related to, and that would be related to inspection for that here, it's the plan. The final one that we do require in those regulations is related to the expansion of existing facilities. So if you have an existing facility, when would we require a new odor mitigation plan? So that's one thing that we discussed actually internally with staff earlier today, and I think there may need to be a little bit more clarification on that to be kind of in line with the rest of the Unified Development Code. So rest of the Unified Development Code, if you expand twenty-five percent, it kicks in new regulation, it kicks in the requirement to bring it up to code. So I think that's one thing that we would like to propose, just kind of a change to that language a little bit. And we'd like your feedback on, just to make sure that it's a little more clear as to when that is required. But that's what we're thinking for odor mitigation. It still is really difficult. We've had conversations with our code enforcement, we've had conversations with Pima County as far as trying to get an understanding of how to truly enforce this. It's a very personal thing. Some people have very sensitive senses of smell, where it would, you know, there may be a very faint smell, but it really affects them. Other people are the complete opposite of that. So it's something that we're, we're trying to help, trying to figure out a way to put something in place that does help, that is enforceable related to this. So drive-throughs, this was something brought up by mayor and council. Currently, they're prohibited, they're actually prohibited throughout the state for medical marijuana facilities that we've seen. But when we started looking at it, it just kind of, you know, we realized that it's the only, we're treating these facilities differently than every other use in the Unified Development Code. So currently, we allow for drive-throughs in C two and C three. And we didn't really see a reason why we were being more restrictive related to these dispensaries versus other things. It also does help with the whole social distancing thing. I understand we're, you know, we're moving, hopefully moving away from, you know, the pandemic and things are getting better. But, you know, there, you know, this is something that we need to, that we do want to address. So our proposal is to remove that restriction for the drive-throughs for the marijuana facilities. Manufacturing and standalone manufacturing, so these are, they're currently allowed, but it's part of a, it's an accessory use to dispensaries, or it's part of the off-site cultivation land use. We wanted to clarify that there can be a standalone manufacturing use. This is specifically laid out in Prop two oh seven, and it's more of a clarity thing for the most part. So what we are proposing here is to do a brand-new standalone manufacturing use. I will say that the one difference here is that off-site cultivation is only allowed in I one and I two. This would be allowed in Park Industrial, it's a less intense use as far as just, so, and it's similar to like food production and things of that sort. So we are allowing for it, it has all the same standards, everything else that's related to off-site cultivation and what it currently is, but that's what we're proposing for this one. Definitions, so this is basically combining the two. It is taking what was a medical marijuana definition and making it into a, making it into just a marijuana dispensary essentially, or regular marijuana location. So we have it listed as marijuana establishment. We may make, we're considering making a minor change related to that just because there's a very clear definition of marijuana establishment in two oh seven. And I think marijuana facility might be a little more clear to make sure that there's that distinction, that this is both dual use, medical, the medical license, and it's the standalone adult use license. And then finally, there, you know, those were kind of the initial ones that we had as a proposal kind of heading into our public meeting. There was a comment about the setbacks, but then what happened was essentially is that we didn't, we hadn't anticipated the licenses being distributed as soon as they were. We had thought they would probably be around earliest late March, but really in April. And what ended up happening was, they started distributing licenses in January, and we kind of started to see some of the impacts of what our regulations are. And I actually think it may have been a very beneficial thing because we are going through this process. So ultimately, what we noticed is that the separation distance is currently very limiting. And it's limiting to the point to where what's happening is, we're, I believe we're seeing, is that dispensaries are going, not all of them, but a lot of dispensaries are ending up in kind of suboptimal locations. So they end up being in areas that might be near residential. It, the way our setbacks were set up, for some reason, it restricts them from a lot of the existing strip malls that are out there that may have lots of parking instead of smaller places that may not have much parking that are next to residential, that have greater impact. So what we've essentially done is, we went through, we did an analysis of a lot of different scenarios and things of that sort, looking at what our current regulations are and what, you know, what we may want to make as far as changes go. So currently, we do, we have a two thousand-foot setback from any other dispensary. We have a two thousand-foot setback from licensed residential substance abuse, diagnostic and treatment facilities, or other licensed residential drug and alcohol rehabs, a thousand feet from school, like K twelve public, private schools, charter schools, childcare centers, public parks, churches, and libraries. And then five hundred feet from school is expanding, but that, I think there's only one situation where that has occurred. So this is kind of, you know, for that analysis, we looked at other communities. We didn't look in-state because there were a lot of medical facilities in state. People hadn't made their changes yet, and, well, I mean, we did look in-state, we know what they have. But also, just the fact that that initial model ordinance really set up most of the different setback distances that we have in our state. So we kind of took a look at other states to see kind of what they do. So a place like Fort Collins has a thousand feet from schools and dispensaries, five hundred feet from childcare facilities, substance abuse facilities, parks and churches. Denver has a thousand feet for schools, childcare facilities, substance abuse facilities, and just other dispensaries. Portland, Oregon, a thousand feet from schools and dispensaries, and then Olympia, a thousand Portland, Oregon, 1,000 feet from schools and dispensaries, and then Olympia, 1,000 feet from schools, and then 500 feet from childcare facilities, public parks and libraries. One thing I will note here is that most of them do have separation distance from other dispensaries. It's to limit clustering essentially. This is something that I think initially we had done that. Just to note that these are communities that don't have the severe limits on the numbers statewide that we do in Arizona. Arizona with 130 total and the fact that it's tied in the legislation or the bill, or it's not a bill, it's the initiative, does severely limit it, the 1 to 10 for a dispensary. So that, for 1 to 10 pharmacies. So that's something to just kind of note related to those. One other thing that we did, we wanted to kind of look statewide to see what we do for others, I guess, similar, kind of similar kind of things such as maybe alcohol. So alcohol establishments, they do have, those are also established by the state of Arizona, 300-foot setback from schools and then 100-foot setback from churches, and that's what that is. So from that, we did some analyses of these. So this right here is basically all the C2 and C3 zones. It's actually C2, C3 zones overlaid over parcels. There could be some parcels that are multiple, that have multiple zones. But that's essentially where it would be located if there were no setback distances. It is quite a bit of space, 8,835 total parcels. And that is where you would start off. This right here, so that orange would be where you could locate if there were no setbacks. This one right here, the blue that is overlaid on the orange, the blue are those setback distances currently in place. So the 2,000 feet that we have for dispensaries and substance abuse facilities and then 1,000 for all the other ones, this is what you have. And what you end up seeing is that by doing that, you really do limit the locations where a lot of these places can go. And it's kind of interesting when you start zooming in, you start realizing that a lot of the major intersections of arterials are completely covered. And those probably would be the places where you would kind of see it and have less of an impact. So for this, it went from 8,835 to 1,157 essentially total parcels. And the acres have significantly reduced as far as acres and places where they can locate. So that's current. What we have put in front of you in your proposal based on your feedback is a, one scenario that is 500 feet from schools as defined by the state. And so that's the first one and that's the one state mandate that is in the bill. And then the second one adds in additional, as in the substance abuse facilities as well. So this is, it's a big difference. This is the separation distance on those parcels, 500 feet from schools. Again, 8,999 parcels, very similar actually to what we had on that first slide. It's reduced a little bit. And then 9,000 acres of land, so there's a lot of room for places to locate. And then this one right here is when you added that in. It reduces a little bit when you add in the separation distance from residential substance abuse facilities. And that goes from about 8,999 to 7,900. So it's about 100 acres lots or so. So that's the other one related to that. So those are kind of the ones in front of you. We did bring some additional maps. They're hidden in the presentation that we can pull up if you'd like to take a look at those as well. But that's where we're at. So with that, that's, those are the amendments that we have in front of you. We, staff recommends, the planning commission approve a motion to recommend the proposed adult use and medical marijuana UDC text amendment with separation distances that match state regulations, that's the 500 feet from schools only, to the city of Tucson, Mayor and Council. And we're happy to take any questions related to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Had a couple of questions. We talked this afternoon about the medical marijuana cultivation land uses that were in the first table. Do you have the code text amendment? Can you put that up?
Oh, let me find it real quickly.
And if those weren't going to change, the medical prefix wasn't going to change from those because those are regulated under separate state law? I think that's what.
Yeah, that's correct. So here, I'm just going to share my screen here. So ultimately Chair Martin is talking about this qualifying patient cultivation location and then a dispensary off-site cultivation location. So these are two uses that are only in the medical ordinance essentially. So they don't really exist with the new adult use only. We had removed the medical here from it, but we didn't do so in the regulations down here, if I can find three and four. Sorry if I'm making you sick. See, if you see here, it says medical marijuana designated caregiver location. So what we need to do is just reconcile those two. So ultimately, I think what we would end up doing is these two would become their own, their own uses that would say actually medical dispensary off-site cultivation, medical qualifying patient location.
And the first line would change from establishment to facilities? Is that what you talked about?
That's correct. Yeah, I think, when we looked at it a little closer, we realized that the facilities that might be a little more clear, it wouldn't mimic the language of something very specific in Proposition 207.
Yeah, the other thing we talked about was anybody can cultivate a certain amount of plants, so those aren't going to be regulated by, those are regulated by the state and wouldn't be regulated in the land use code.
That's correct. There isn't a proposal for that. Those are regulated by the state. They are allowed the six, they're allowed the six plants for the, per household and then 12 for two-person households.
So that could happen in any zone basically, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, I'd like to open up for a general discussion for the commission to ask questions of the staff. And I will look for hands held up this time. I see, well, I didn't see who was first, but Mark Fink, Michael and Chris Ortiz so far.
I guess, Mark, do you want to go first?
Yeah, Daniel, can you comment on that second letter we received from the woman talking about the site? I think it's near like Grant Lee or I guess it can't be between, somewhere in that area or Parkin Lee. I think that came up when we were doing medical marijuana several years ago, but if you could talk about what zoning is and also if there is, what are the possibilities of that site even being able to expand under the proposed regulations?
Sure, Commissioner Fink, yeah. So, and it's entirely possible that either our council or director might be able to speak to this as well. I don't, I'm limited in the background on this a little bit, but that site that's at Parkin Lee is, it's Zone C3. It was a car wash previously. It is in the middle of, you know, it's surrounded by a lot of residential, but it is a C3 zone. And it has been reviewed by our staff and determined to meet all of the setbacks for that facility. I am, I don't, just because it is that one parcel that's C3, I think there's very limited ability for it to expand. I think it's probably built out to pretty close to where, you know, if you look at that site, it's basically, you know, it's parking, it's landscaping and then it's a building and it doesn't appear there to be too much room for it to expand.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't see who was next, but I guess, Michael?
I'm not, Commissioner.
I'm sorry. Chris?
My question was actually just in regards to what you were talking about earlier about private cultivation. And there wouldn't be any odor regulations for private cultivation either, would there? Or is that just for facilities?
Commissioner Ortiz, you know, no, those odor mitigation, the odor mitigation plan and everything that goes along with that, that's related to dispensaries, off-site cultivation and manufacturing facilities.
I see Ms. Cassidy has her hand up. Commissioner Cassidy?
Yeah, I've got a question and also a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to commend staff on how well they did the analysis of this. They put together a really nice presentation. I appreciate that. And I wanted to ask, based on the letter that we received from, I believe it was Ms. Barron now that Commissioner Fink referred to earlier, the drive-throughs, are there any restrictions in the UDC anywhere that limit the proximity of a drive-through to a residential use?
Commissioner Cassidy, I don't believe there is, but that's, I'm not entirely sure of that. I could take a look, but I don't believe there are any restrictions related to, as far as in relation to a residential use. They're just, they are allowed in the C2 and the C3 zones.
Got it. Okay. And then I've got some comments that I wanted to make on the setbacks. I understand the desire to equate it to an alcohol use. During the study session last week, I thought that made a lot of sense. But as I've thought about it more over the past week and spoken with some neighbors and acquaintances about the amendments that are being considered, the more it occurred to me that it really isn't apples to apples. And the reason being is that alcohol sales, I have, you know, five places within five minutes of my house that I can go to if I want to buy alcohol. These marijuana facilities, because they are so limited in number by the licenses that the state gives out, they have a much larger pool area, so they're attracting a lot, you know, a much larger geographical area to their locations. So I really believe it's different in that manner and also the enforcement of marijuana versus the enforcement of alcohol, it's very different just because of the nature of it. So one thing that I wanted to mention was that I'd like to be a little more conservative in how we reduce the setbacks. I don't want to go too far too soon. I understand not wanting to have to reopen this and amend it again in six months if it's still too restrictive. But I do feel that going from 2,000 and 1,000 to just 500 for a very limited list of sensitive uses is probably going a little too far right off the bat. Once we do that, if it ends up being too loose, it's going to be really hard to make it more restrictive at any point in the future versus taking a more conservative approach. If it ends up being too limiting, we can always reduce them further. But I'd rather take a conservative approach. So I would like for the commission to consider making the setbacks 1,000 instead of 500. And in addition to the schools, keeping the separation from the substance abuse treatment facilities at 1,000 and also adding in public parks and childcare centers.
Chair Martin, this is Scott Clark. Could I make a comment here?
Yes.
So if the planning commission has questions for clarification on the presentation that Dan gave, that's appropriate at this time. But if you're going to start making recommendations and stating positions, I would like you to wait until after the public hearing. So you've had the opportunity to hear from the public and you've had the opportunity to consider that before you weigh in on specific recommendations.
Thank you.
Yep, sorry about that. I should have let you know sooner. My fault.
No, that's a good point. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff from the commissioners? I don't see any.
I don't know how to raise my hand on the system here. Excuse me for interrupting, sir.
Sorry, go ahead.
Just to speak a little bit, you said mayor and council were discussing the issue and in particular, Word 5 had something to say. Can you tell us a little bit more about that, what they're?
Yes, Commissioner Pafford, that was back when we had our, sorry, that was back when we had our study session in November. And I believe it was really in the context of social distancing and COVID-19 and figuring out ways to not require people to necessarily gather in close proximity inside of dispensaries. And that's kind of how the conversation went.
Okay. And also about the licenses, the, can, how are they sort of issued? I mean, can you talk to me?
So Commissioner Pafford, there is a, and we're not entirely sure what the process is going to be for the social equity licenses that do come out. They're currently drafting those rules. Once we understand the rules, then we'll know what the application process is. The way it is currently, it was actually, I think, that it was a streamlined process for all of the existing existing medical facilities to get their license. There are the new ones that are coming in in the other counties. It's a little more in-depth. They have to give a background check. They have to show that they have a certain amount of money in the bank as far as liquidity and things of that sort. There's a whole kind of set of rules and they submit that information to the state. I believe the state checks, they check to make sure that they have a location that they could go into. They have zoning approval and things of that sort. And then as long as they meet that, then they have a lottery for those, within those areas as far as how they determine who gets the license.
I see. So if I understood what you just said correctly, the equity licenses have not been totally created or defined? And if that's in the process of happening?
Commissioner Pafford, that is correct. It's in the process of being defined. So we're not entirely sure what that's going to be for that.
So we want to move forward with this proposal before the licenses and how that's going to work. I mean, the city's staff brother is recommending that we move forward with this text amendment or to approve your motion, even though the licenses haven't really been created or defined as of yet.
Yeah, so Commissioner Pafford, so the thing is with this is that there is a need to make, so currently we have what, 13 licenses that are in the city of Tucson. And it has created some impacts on certain areas. And there's also impacts related to the dispensaries that are currently trying to pack a bunch of people into a space that was intended just for medical, now they have dual use. So there is an immediate need to make the changes now. Should there be a need to make changes at a later date related to social equity licenses or things of that sort? We can do that. So part of the issue with this is that it's just an unknown timeline. So if we, if, you know, if we knew that it would be out next week or two weeks from now, I think, you know, it might be a different situation, but the fact is that we just don't know when it's going to be. And then it's again, you know, they have to start beginning license, receiving license six months after those rules are in place. So there could be, you know, next year at some point. We're not sure. That's essentially where we're at with that.
And the city or the state or both are working on those, the creation and the definition for those?
So Commissioner Pafford, actually related to that, it is, it's pretty much the state working on it. They have a stakeholder group that they're working with and they're the ones who are creating those rules. We can attempt to try to influence that in certain ways, but it's really their thing.
So we would have to retroactively adapt what we might do or have done rather, if the motion carries to fit what the equity license creation and definition say. We would have to come back to the issue and then modify our, what we're doing here today. what we're doing here today to, to fit that.
Commissioner Pafford, so potentially, I think, I think we've created a definition that does incorporate a standalone adult-use marijuana facility and a marijuana license. So it could, it would, the way we've crafted it, it would fit within our proposed regulations essentially. If there were a need to come back after we see the rules, we could definitely come back and do that. Commissioner Martin, I'm not sure if you see the
Having trouble with my
No worries. So Chair, Chair Martin, I believe Commissioner Young had his hand up. I'm not sure if you could see the video.
Um, I guess I just wanted to explore this about the social equity licenses a little bit more. I mean, those, whoever gets those licenses, their dispensaries are going to be treated the same as any other dispensary based on what we're doing here tonight. So in a sense, making it easier for dispensaries to open up by changing the zoning code is actually going to make it easier in a sense for those that end up getting a social equity license. It's going to make it easier for them to be able to open up an establishment just because there will be significantly more area for them to do so with the loosening of the zoning code. Is that correct?
Yeah, potentially that would, that would be the case related to that. Chair Martin, I believe Commissioner Artizi Pino has his hand up as well.
Is there any?
Oh, Commissioner, Chair Martin, I believe you, oh, sorry. There you go.
Commissioner Artizi Pino.
Is there any way for, or any other way for the planning commission to weigh in on how those social equity licenses are issued or at least permitted within the city of Tucson? I mean, without the ability to kind of influence the Arizona Department of Health and how they set the criteria? Is there anything that the planning commission of the city can do to influence may more a different hour definition of social equity or something that we would find more socially equitable?
So Commissioner, Chair Martin, you mind if I speak a little bit? So, yes, so the, the city can in fact work with the state and influence the norms and language that they're seeking to implement on social equity. If the planning commission wanted to make as a recommendation as part of this, that the, the city participate in those discussions and seek to play an active role in it or something along those lines, that's entirely appropriate. Of course, since there are no specific rules or guidance put out yet, I don't think you could go much farther than that yet because there's nothing to comment on. But you're encouraging the city to do so, encouraging the city to participate, I think, is all a legitimate thing the planning commission are making their recommendation.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff from the commissioners? Commissioner Pafford?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, is it, is it even at all, we don't, we don't have any idea what the timeline for the creation of the equity licenses and, and how they're defined. Is, is that what you're telling, telling us that we just don't know what the timeframe is going to be?
Commissioner Pafford, yeah, I, we're not entirely sure of what that timeline is.
Could it be fairly quickly? Do you anticipate based on the urgency of this? The only reason I ask is because I was just wondering if I'm a little, I want to talk about this to, to, to comment on what Scott said, excuse me. But I'm just curious, what would be the harm? What's the urgency in, in pushing this through before we know more information about how they're going to be created and defined?
Yeah, I mean, I ultimately, I, it's, it, they could come out with the rules tomorrow and then it would be again, another probably, you know, it, it could be within six months that they would, you know, begin accepting licenses. So I, you know, I have a hard time, I, I don't, I don't know. I have a hard time speculating as to whether or not they would have it anytime soon. I do think that, you know, the way we've crafted it, it does address, it does address those adult-use only licenses. And as Commissioner Young said, potentially, you know, potentially it would open up more areas for them to go, thus, you know, kind of supporting those, those businesses as they come on, come on board.
Anybody else?
I'm sorry, sir. I didn't, I, I'm just trying to formulate. Is there a way, or meaning, what would be the difficulty just to understand for holding off until that happened? I'm sure you explained it, but clarify for me why that would be?
So Commissioner Pafford, right, currently we have, it's basically related to the existing buildings that we have, existing businesses. They are limited to their 4,000 square feet to where previously they had their medical use only in their 4,000 square feet. And it is, it is, it's limiting, especially considering they're going from serving just one segment of the population for medical to medical and adult use. In a lot of places, from what we've seen in Colorado and California, sometimes it can be up to three or four times as many people coming into those businesses. It's creating queuing issues. We've already seen it with a handful of dispensaries to where it's, it's causing impacts on neighborhoods. Blandman Elm right now is having a lot of issues with this related to it. So it is something that we are trying to move quickly on to change those regulations to kind of draw those businesses into other places that aren't having as much of an impact on those, you know, neighborhoods and things of that sort. So that is, that is, that's the urgency is the fact that the law came through and it is currently having an impact, not in all cases, but in some cases.
Thank you, Dan, very much.
Yeah. And I just, to give you a little bit, maybe more context, was mayor and council was in a bit of urgency to get their medical marijuana regulations on the books so they could, you know, basically move the industry forward in Tucson. There is an acknowledgement that the social equity clauses in state law is completely undefined at this point. So that is going to require some legislative action or, or participation by, or DSHS in rulemaking in which the city should have the opportunity to participate. So again, back to the planning commission making certain recommendations or desires known in their, their recommendation to the council is entirely appropriate. So if, for example, you wanted to recommend to council that they do their best to ensure that the city's interest to representative discussions, participation in committees and such, totally on board, totally appropriate.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody else? Is that another question from Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you. I've got a question on the parking. So if an existing 4,000 square foot dispensary wants to expand to 10,000 square feet, assuming this amendment gets adopted by council, would they have to provide additional parking?
Commissioner Cassidy, yes, they would. They would have to meet the parking standards, which are the same as other retail businesses, one to 300, or one space per 300 square feet of floor space or gross floor area.
Okay. So if their lot couldn't accommodate the additional parking spaces, they wouldn't be able to expand beyond a certain point?
That is correct.
Thank you.
If that's all the questions for staff, I want to open up the public hearing. Requested those who would like to speak to the planning commission at this time. Generally, there's a time limit of three to five minutes per speaker, which may be extended. Members of the commission may ask questions of the speakers, but we do ask the speakers to be timely as we want to make sure that those who would like to be heard have an opportunity. We have two people have requested to speak ahead of time, but you can always raise your hand and we'll try to get to you. The first speaker is I think Jamal Givens. The second is Rana Lashgari. I'm sorry if I am messing your name up. Jamal Givens here?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
How you doing? Thank you. Thank you, commissioners, for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Jamal Givens and I'm the president and CEO of LP Canse, which is a nonprofit organization that focuses on prevention of substance use and misuse, teen pregnancy, delinquency, school dropout, violence and promoting mental health. I wanted to share with you all my concern about the setback that you, regarding the setbacks. And I think on the first text that was submitted to you all, you had it at about, I think, 1,000 or 2,000 feet. And then when I looked at it, the last study session and saw what was being proposed was 500 feet. And my letter goes into why I'm concerned with that, but I wanted to add some additional information while I was here with you this evening. My concern and concern in working with youth, as I have done over the last 20 years being here in Tucson, Arizona, and have the opportunity to work throughout all school districts here, being a graduate of the University of Arizona and an advocate for youth. I'm concerned with substance use in general. With the increase of the use of marijuana in our communities, especially with the high levels of concentration of THC in marijuana today is a, is a huge concern. And I know a lot of people, I tried to get out ahead of the Prop 207 to educate people about those concerns. The schools that I've been in, we're seeing youth with vape pens that contain THC with levels of 80% THC in our schools. And a lot of times, parents don't recognize or understand this. A lot of the people that I can see on here, commissioners, you all are older, probably about the same, close to my age probably, probably. I'm still 20, 25, 25, yes. So you know. But it's not the marijuana of back in the day. It's not the marijuana with THC levels of two to seven percent. I mean, we can get shatter up to, we can almost get it up to 99% THC levels. And so when we talk about these dispensaries and cultivation sites being near our schools or places where youth gather, we should be concerned. We need to make sure that we're allowing an opportunity to have those setbacks so that there is no unintended consequences. And that, that's what's interesting to me and in learning about this and studying. I've never been a part of the, never thought to come to the planning commission to talk. I normally go to city council. But when I think about alcohol dispensaries, while different, you know, over time, what happened in the communities that were low socioeconomic status and people of color and things of that nature was that we had a over saturation of alcohol outlets. And I don't think, you know, when I listened to you all in your study sessions, that even probably the people back in the day when they were allowing zoning to occur didn't think that there would be an over saturation of liquor licenses in a particular area. They just didn't think about it. And we're in that same place right now where we can think about what will happen five, 10, 15 years from now. Prop 207 is what it is today, but it will be different 10 years from now. There'll be something, something, somebody will come up with a way to allow more dispensaries to be in our communities and state and nation. And so when we talk about dispensaries and cultivation sites being places where, near places where youth are gathered, I just want to share briefly that we want to be concerned with impaired driving. In Wash, in Colorado, 69% of marijuana users admitted to driving stoned. So we want to keep these people that are coming to the dispensaries and not all, I understand that. And I don't want to shed a bad light on people that choose to smoke, you know, marijuana. I get it. I'm not mad at you. But there are some people, and I went to college and I hung out and I got acquaintances even today that's, that smoke out. And I liked what the commissioner said, probably she said a little bit too early, but was that, you know, alcohol and marijuana are different. I mean, a lot of the cats that I know that smoke out from white people, black people, Hispanic, Latinx, they don't just do it on the weekends. They do it on a daily basis. They wake and bake. They use it to get through the day. When you got the vape pen, it makes it that much more easier because you can't smell it or detect it. That's what the problem is in our schools. And so when we talk about people being impaired and driving, we need to be considerate of that and push them further away from the school so they're not coming around that area when kids are walking to schools. Almost one third of Colorado users admitted to driving stone daily. Now, we can use these other states that have been doing this before us as examples and learn from that. In Colorado, traffic deaths involving drivers who tested positive for marijuana more than doubled after legalization. Doubled. In Washington, daytime drivers tested positive for THC almost tripled from eight to eight percent to 23% after legalization.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Yes, sir. And so I just ask you all to consider the setback, to be as far, maybe the 2,000 if possible, and reconsider later if need be. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rana Lashgari?
That's right. Hi, good evening. My name is Rana Lashgari. I'm an attorney for UFCW, United Food and Commercial Workers, Local 99. I wanted to start off by thanking you for your careful consideration of this item. I think in the discussions in the study session and today, you've touched on a lot of points that I hope to talk to you about. As Dan and many of you have mentioned in even this hearing, there's a lot about our state's recreational program that we don't yet know. For UFCW, the social equity program is incredibly important for us. Those 26 additional licenses are very important. And as of now, DHS has not even released the draft rules. So there's so much we don't know about what the landscape is going to look like once all the licenses are issued. Our hope is of course that the social equity program will be inclusive, will be diverse, will expand the diversity in the industry. But at this point, we just don't know. We don't know what the application process would be like. We don't know what the timeline will be. We don't know who will qualify, what kinds of fees and financial requirements there will be. And we don't yet know what, how those licenses will be allocated throughout the state, either by county or city, or if there's going to be any kind of geographic limitations to those. So on behalf of our members, really, I'm here to ask you to wait. Please participate in the draft rule creation. Please take a look at those. But wait until we have the final outcome of that program and we see whether we have, what the licenses look like, how they're issued, and we have the opportunity to really evaluate that program and see if it reflects the values of the kind of dispensaries we want in our community. And until we have the ability to do that, we ask that you not grant any additional licenses, permits, locations until we have the ability to evaluate that program and see what the, the recreational program in its entirety will look like, including those social equity applications. One thing that's come up, and I, and I want to stress before I close, is that every location that we grant early is one less location that will be available to a social equity licensee at when that program is finalized. And so it's incredibly important that we create a level playing field that those applicants have and those licensees have just as much a chance to, to open up their businesses in the best locations. And until we know what that program will look like, we are asking the commission and to the city to not grant any additional license, permits or locations until we have all the facts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just a call on Michael because he had to stand up so early in the process.
Thank you, Commissioner. I guess I have a couple of comments. And I'm not sure in a particular order here. One of them had to do with the language in the proposed text amendment. I agree that you, the, it needs to be cleaned up with respect to the medical issue because there, there are still medical licenses. I mean, we, the dual licenses have to be together. And the, the adult use has a separate cultivation with it as well. So there is a medical cultivation and a, a recreational cultivation. So it should be, make sure that includes both of those and the, and that particular text definition and so forth. With regard to the, the manufacturing, as it's been called, it, it should be noted, it's also a distribution manufacturing. With regard to the, the manufacturing, um, as as it's been called, it it should be noted, it's also a distribution manufacturing location. And I would hate, and I, I, I participated in the, in the um prior um stakeholder discussions. But I think that limiting it to the I one, I two zoning is, is uh you guys should reconsider that, or at least making that recommendation. I I've been, we've been looking, and just, and I should guess I should have said this at the beginning. I'm um part owner of two dispensaries in Tucson and one of them being the one at Park and Lee, um, which I live three blocks from. Um, but we are, we've been looking for a distribution um manufacturing facility at the warehouse spaces around Tucson. And the, what's, what's, what, at least we're seeing when we go out looking at these is that the locations that are probably best for what we need them to do um would be in the C two, C three zoning as well. And so I would ask that you consider making those available, those little properties available for um distribution and manufacturing. And when we say manufacturing, just so people know, we're not talking heavy industrial here. We're talking um either kitchens where, you know, uh edibles are are manufactured or uh um where uh concentrates uh are done, and that would be included ma- making cartridges and so forth. So um, it's not some kind of heavy industrial type use that would need to be restricted to industrial. Um, so that's one thing. Um, the other had to do, I, um, I'm a little concerned about the odor mitigation issues that have come up. Um, I know that um um that, you know, based on uh the noise that's made out there with regard to odor issues. Um, I I would, I would say that it seems to be in one lo- one area and one, you know, one or two people in particular that have complained a lot about it. The, the current odor mitigation seems to be working. Um, I would hate to have some type of enforcement put in place that um is going to hold different locations uh to different standards based on how many people complain and whether those complaints can be can be resolved. Um, I think staff did, did, you know, said it, said it best that, you know, some people have very sensitive noses, some people don't. And but the city's done a really good job and and uh at least retroactively um getting people to do uh um um odor mitigation. And um, so again, I would hate to have that um whatever is put into law be that restrictive. Um, with regard to the, to waiting, I just wanted to comment quickly. I, you know, I appreciate the comments that have previously been made. Um, but the, there, there, Arizona's been very unique in how we've implemented the, this program. And we've looked at other states um and uh and the mistakes that they've made with regard to too many dispensaries or um uh clustering dispensaries together. And I think that was pointed out is that there's a limited number of licenses in Arizona. So the issue of clustering and and um issuing too many uh or having too many locations in Tucson that are available to put a dispenser or a distribution facility or a cultivation facility, I don't think is, is should be um given a lot of weight to to those concerns because there are just not enough, not that many licenses available. And with regard to-
Wrap it up, please?
Sure. And with regard to the, the current locations and and the, the risk of, of, uh, oh, I, I know what I wanted to really mention is that the drive-through window issue. It, it's not the typical drive-through window that you would expect in like a McDonald's or so, but it'd be more of a Walgreens type where people are coming just to pick up orders that they've already placed. Most places in town are doing pre-orders. And just real quickly, and then I'll, I'll be done. Regarding to delivery, um, I know that it was, it, it's in the proposition. Medical uh, medical are still going to be able to get delivered to. And so it was the, the way they changed the delivery issue and the, and the text amendment, I think needs to be addressed because it's kind of says it's limited to when the DHS permits it. Medical is permitted currently. It's just recreational or adult use is not permitted to be delivered until twenty twenty-three. So I think that that needs to be cleared up in the text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next I have Lauren Niehaus.
Hi there. Thank you, commissioners. I apologize for being one of those that did not pre-register. Um, but I appreciate you taking the opportunity to hear a comment. I first want to thank, I'm sorry, I'm with Harvest Health Recreation. We have Harvest of Tucson, located in Tucson. Um, I want to thank Dan and the team for the very thoughtful approach in putting these together, as I'm sure many of you have seen a number of cities enacted sort of, you know, knee-jerk reactions back in November as soon as Prop two oh seven began or was passed. And so I appreciate all the work that has gone into this ordinance. I want to support the setback changes that have been proposed here specifically in regards to dispensaries. I'm sure that most of you, if not all of you, are not unaware of some of the issues that our particular dispensary has faced in terms of parking and traffic uh due to our location and and sizing that came back uh in place years ago under the more strict medical regulations. So we do support the ability to find a location that has the appropriate setbacks under the proposed new text amendment that might allow for more parking and more traffic mitigation. We, we want to be a good part, business partner. We want to be a good partner with the city. And I know, um, I can't speak for other dispensaries, but I think as an industry, our goal is to ensure that we are not a nuisance of any sort. We are just a legally operating business, just like all of the other legally operating businesses in the city. Um, I would like to echo what Michael, Michael just stated in terms of licensing in Arizona, we have what we call a limited license market. Um, in, I, I'm in Colorado right now, and we have a similar sized population as Arizona, but about five to six hundred dispensaries, whereas the state of Arizona has about a hundred and thirty. So you can see the differentiation between how the market was set up, and Arizona has done a great job of learning from other states' mistakes and successes and setting up a, a successful limited license market here. Finally, I wanted to touch quickly, uh briefly on the social equity component. I cannot speak for Arizona DHS, but we have had conversations with DHS. Um, there is both some legislation at the AZ Legislature right now talking about social equity, and DHS has stated publicly that they will be having a series of stakeholder uh meetings that will involve anybody that's interested in participating, industry, cities such as Tucson, and I certainly encourage everybody to participate. But they have expressed that they want to get their social equity program right. There have been examples across the country of social equity programs not being done right, and it doesn't end up well for the applicants or the city or the state. And so I commend DHS in doing that, and I, I believe that their timeline is um not within the next week. I know that their application period for the early applicants closed last week. They have a sixty-day statutory timeline to get through those applications. And it is my understanding that at, after that, part of this process is concluded, they'll begin looking at the social equity program, rulemaking, how the applications will roll out, et cetera. In proper, Prop two oh seven, there is no timeline in which the social equity program has to be developed. So uh, we don't have a timeline, but I just wanted to share that bit of information that I did know. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Um, I think next is Dimitri.
Oh, am I, am I live? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Lauren, we're trying to get a, a fixed date on that timeline, too. We would appreciate the support of your lobbyists on that. My name is Dimitri Downing. I'm with the Marijuana and the Trade Association. I'm here. Uh, Michael, thank you for your wonderful comments. Uh, I'm here for one particular thing, but a bunch of other things are, or or, or a message or, or pointed out. The manufacturing, right now across Arizona uh in this industry, there's a search for real estate, as Michael had mentioned. And Tucson has an opportunity to seize upon this as a community and to bring jobs in manufacturing centers back to Tucson. I would urge you, Michael has said C two, C three, to make it as available as possible. These are simple kitchens, basically. They're not dangerous places. They're not, there's no reason not to have them. And the more retail, the more commercial space we make available for these manufacturing centers, the more jobs we have, making Tucson a production hub, uh, and then, you know, producing things that will be sent out to Phoenix and other places. I promise you, the council wants uh the manufacturing centers, the hundred and thirty of them, as many properties to be of, as available as possible. In an ideal world, all one hundred and thirty of these centers would be in the city of Tucson uh hosting jobs. And you guys can make a big difference. In two thousand and eleven, I was working in Cunningham's office. There was a wave after Prop two, two thousand and ten. City of Tucson and everybody created these ordinances. Nobody knew what was going on. We screwed it up. We created an ordinance that limited the size of cultivation. We had to come back and change that two thousand and thirteen, fourteen. Uh, Daniel knows this stuff really, really well. I urge you to listen to him. Um, but we have to come back and change that. The resulting change resulted in hundreds of jobs and cultivation centers being created uh in, in Tucson. Had we not changed it, we wouldn't have seen those jobs. So, you know, I urge you to look closely at that manufacturing thing. A, a couple of other things, though. You brought up the social equity and, and, and Rana brought up waiting. Waiting, I, I know this process better than anybody. I've, you know, I've, I've been in this industry for eight years studying policy. Waiting on this for any reason is only going to uh impact negatively social equity applicants who will be going through this process that the state creates and be looking for properly zoned properties. And, and so that would be a huge mistake. That would not a huge mistake to wait because you come back and you change it and realize it was a nothing burger, and you'd create an opportunity for them at a later date. But it just, go ahead and said it now. And Jay had it right. You know, creating more spaces for social equity applicants is a great thing. I actually know other jurisdictions that you have certain dispensary owners specifically trying to lobby them out of existence because it creates competition. So I applaud Prime Leaf, Michael, to be on here, and Lauren Harvest for their public position that they support, uh, you know, making the setbacks, um, uh, changing the setbacks so there are, there, so there is more opportunity for social equity applicants. Because in the end, they're creating their own competition. So I really applaud both Prime Leaf and Harvest for your public policy positions there. I have seen in other cities where certain dispensaries came in and urged the communities to uh to limit, well, I mean, you don't really see it because it happens in the back rooms. And, and that excludes uh the social equity applicants from coming into those towns. So I applaud both those organizations. But if anybody wants to learn about the cannabis industry, I put my website on there. We have about sixty hours of free information, and we'll have about a hundred hours by the time our social equity mentorship program that we have designed is done in May. And uh, of course, I'm available at uh, you know, uh-
I don't see anybody else's hand raised. Um, I'd like to, at this time, see if anybody else would like to speak on the this text amendment. Uh, Margie?
Yes, thank you. I just a really quick comment. All I'm asking as a community member, as a community advocate, that doesn't, that works with youth is to very seriously think before you act. That's all I ask, to do it sincerely. Some, if this is coming from my heart, really think about what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak to this item? But Mike, Michael, you already spoke, so um-
I just had a quick question. I just wondered if staff could explain the um, the uh odor mitigation kind of escalation of citation issue. I wasn't, I couldn't really follow it in the text amendment.
Daniel, is it possible to do that or?
Um, Chair Martin, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to speak to that. So ultimately, what it is, is um, if there is a complaint, um, what would happen is we would go uh, go and look back at the uh, the odor mitigation plan. If there is one, there are a lot of facilities that didn't have an odor mitigation plan. Um, we would go and take a look at that odor mitigation plan. Um, we would go and do an inspection and make sure that um it was built to whatever the specific specifications of that plan. Um, if it, if it weren't, um, then we would require them to bring it up to whatever the code was or whatever was approved. Um, that's what we, that's, that's essentially what it would be. Um, and then we would require revisions really if it, if, if you were to expand beyond twenty-five percent or something of that sort. Um, we did put in a, um, you know, I, 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 there is another piece in there that is more related to um the complaints and actually having to go and make changes. Um, I'm, it's the, the, it's, it's in there um for consideration of the planning commission. Um, we have concerns that you end up in a, in a, in a never-ending feedback loop of trying to fix your odor mitigation plan to um, to address complaints and never being able to do so. Um, and that's why we put in a limit of two. Um, but even at that, I, I believe, you know, we, we do want your feedback on that. Um, because I'm not entirely sure how enforceable that is, and it, and it could be a, a needlessly creating um uh kind of a, 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 kind of a gray area that, that, that just isn't enforceable, essentially. So uh, we do, we do seek um the feedback of the planning commission on that one.
Thank you, Daniel. Um, seeing no more speakers, I'd like to uh ask for motion to close the public hearing. Anybody?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Fink and then Commissioner?
Ortiz Z Pino.
Thank you very much. Um, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Um, call for uh general discussion by the commission. Um, I'll- I'd like to, oh, Commissioner Young?
Um, yeah, uh, about the issue of odor mitigation, um, I'm just curious about other uses that are also already permitted in the zones that we're talking about allowing uh dispensaries and, and other marijuana-related uses. Um, what odor mitigation uh uh is, are businesses supposed to undertake, like restaurants come to mind as, you know, that have a lot of smells associated with them? I mean, how are other businesses treated uh in that aspect?
So, um, okay, go ahead, Scott.
Well, I, I'll let Dan give you the uh, the policy and the language. We, we had an active enforcement case on a restaurant located on Speedway, and we were getting complaints regarding odor. And, and as you discussed, the uh odor was coming from a wood-fired grill inside the restaurant. They had a hood. They put dampening on their exhaust fence. And so in this particular case, we are only getting one odor complaint for someone who had expressed that they were very sensitive to smoke. Uh, so Pima County is actually the agency that goes out and enforces this. They do the equality roles here in the county. And they were unable on, on any of their trips out, and I think they made three trips out there to really pin down that they had a legitimate uh problem. So, you know, when you have a wood burning restaurant with odor mitigation and smoke mitigation on it, it seems to work, except in those places where you have individuals that are very sensitive to that smell. And in that case, the enforcement agency really struggles with pinning it down and lists there's a lot of particulate, a lot of visible smoke, and in, in these cases, we're not.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Fink?
Um, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, a few comments. One, um, the comments from the, the first, the comments from the first gentleman we heard who worked for the uh, the nonprofit. While I understand where he's coming from, all his comments are more, seem to be more relevant to whether you pass regulations to legalize the recreational use of marijuana or not. And the people of the state of Arizona decided, yes, we are. Um, so it becomes an issue of if you want to educate kids about not smoking pot and such, or you want to educate people not driving and smoking, just like you try to educate people not to drink and drive. But in terms of locations, um, I really didn't feel his comments really related to that. Um, and so in um, respect to the comments made earlier by um Commissioner Cassidy, I'm not sure what we're protecting, you know, being conservative, what are you protecting people from? What are the damages that have occurred? Just willy-nilly kind of decide, well, let's be conservative and expand all the- well, let's be conservative and expand all the the setbacks and expand the uses that you're gonna have setbacks from. Particularly what she suggested, um gets us into the, one, gets us into the situation we're in now that we experienced with the dispensary at the Grant and Treat. Where you have so many people wanting to come um to purchase product in a place that's not the greatest place for it. But what's gonna happen with all these setbacks is you've essentially said, well, we're fine with that. That's where we're gonna have to go because as the the maps that staff has provided us, providing those kind of setbacks is gonna eliminate a lot of the places that would make a lot more sense to locate at them. I e, a lot of the existing shopping centers, including a lot of more bun shopping centers, which would be really appropriate. But I'm not sure what we're protected. Having a big setback from a church, what are we protecting? What risks, what dangers are going to accrue to the people who are going to the church? The state of Arizona, which is pretty conservative, has determined that five hundred feet is sufficient setback from a school. And again, from parks and libraries and such, I'm just not sure what we're protecting people from. And again, just like if people wanted to buy liquor, you have to be twenty-one to buy product. So there's gonna be a, and I suspect dispensaries are gonna have an incredibly strict enforcement policy to make sure they don't sell product to anybody that's underage. I can imagine the law enforcement would come down pretty heavily on those people who didn't abide by those kind of laws. So, um, I think staff's recommendation makes perfect sense to me. I, the, besides the schools, having a separation from a drug rehab center, I can understand that. And so I would support that. And if you want to put in some distance between dispensaries, that's fine. I don't think that's gonna be a problem because as everybody knows, um, and as Daniel said last week, we're only gonna have fifteen to twenty dispensaries at the most. So I mean, we're not gonna have that kind of clustering of dispensaries that you could have with establishments that sell liquor. And yeah, this is not like liquor. There are a lot more places where you can buy liquor and you can buy pot. You can buy liquor at liquor stores, you can buy them at convenience stores, you can buy them at Walgreens, and you can go to bars and restaurants and get liquor. They're all over the place. There's only gonna be fifteen dispensaries. Making people drive more, I don't know what problem that's going to solve, except for more people on the roads. And if somebody is so irresponsible that they can't wait five minutes to to smoke a joint or to take some product, then by making them drive more, you're gonna have these people driving more often and farther. So that's what I have to say now. So I would, I support what staff has come up with.
Thank you. Commissioner McBride Olson?
Well, Commissioner Fink, I'm I'm gonna beg to differ with you. Um, I I tend to want to fall on the side of, with uh Commissioner Cassidy that, you know, it, it makes me wonder when I look at the chart of separation distance comparisons and I look at Colorado and Oregon and Washington and and see how many more dispensaries they have available to them. They have still chosen to choose a thousand-foot different distance between uh dispensaries and schools. And and unfortunately, you know, that that's a formula you didn't show us in in these charts, you know, when you, when we looked at a thousand-foot difference from schools, you combined it with two thousand feet from other, other items. And, you know, I think that the you, you know, it's gonna be really easy to loosen up these regulations for, you know, to change them. But if we you know, with, if we find unintended consequences from making them too loose, it's gonna be impossible to tighten them up. So I would fall on the side of caution at this point and, um, you know, look at perhaps a thousand-foot difference between schools and parks and libraries. I don't, you know, I don't know why churches get to fall into that same category, but but the rest of them, you know, the distances, I don't think, I don't think are necessary to have, especially the distances between dispensaries since there's so few allowed. I think that would still open up a lot of new property uh where you could see uh better location of some of these facilities. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Ortiz Pino.
Thank you, Chair Martin. Um, to respond to uh the previous two commissioners' comments, I think that a compromise can be reached. Um, I would be interested personally in data backing up whether or not proximity to a uh dispensary has influence on on kids and what the influence would be. You know, I think there, you can't get into these places unless you're an adult. And so, you know, kids are gonna get access to it by other means, by people who are gonna buy it for them, in which case it doesn't matter how close they are to the schools. I think there is something to say about, you know, out of sight, out of mind. And I think that's a valid point. You know, if they're, if they're not around it, they don't see it on their way to school every day, then maybe it's not a thing. But on my own account, I did have a question for staff in regards to um the, I believe it, I was looking for it in the, in the materials. Is there a one-year period kind of like hold on when dispensaries would be able to move or relocate or expand based on the new uh UDC? I remember hearing something about that, but I couldn't find it.
Um, Commissioner Ortiz Pino, yes, um, it it's only related to those new medical uh licenses that'll be coming out. So those twelve that are going into those counties. And we're not sure about the rules related to social equity licenses. Current, current ones can move. They've been in place long enough to where they can move um in the city, they can move outside of the city, they can, things of that sort.
Hey, Dan, Daniel, I don't mean to chime in, but the the those licenses are are um.
Excuse me, um, Michael, the, the public hearing is closed.
Well, I just wanted to correct a factual check. Those licenses.
You can't speak right now. It's, it's closed.
So, uh, Ortiz Pino, I I'm I'm maybe mistaken on how, on on how they they move. Um, in the past, they've been able to move, but I, it, the new ones might be different.
Okay. So I guess my concern, the reason I brought that up, is because I understand the urgency to um kind of open up or expand the the UDC so that we can deal with the issues at hand. And there's a sense of urgency for that. But I'm also very concerned about the social equity piece and um, you know, how the city is able to kind of influence what the state, how the state regulates that. So I suppose I would, I would like, would there be a, a negative impact to putting a halt or temporary halt on new licenses, these new uh uh social equity licenses while still allowing existing licenses to to move forward? Giving us time to kind of maybe have more influence over the rulemaking procedures.
Commissioner Ortiz Pino, the only um way that we can see that that you'd be able to do that um would be to potentially prohibit the standalone adult use license. So you go through and you prohibit the standalone adult use license. Um, and then you would come back when you have those rules in place for the, because that's the, that they're the standalone adult use license. That would, that would be the only way that we can see um related to doing that. And then you would have, um, you would go through and make those amendments at a, at a later date.
And so you wouldn't be able to deal with the urgency at hand?
Um, excuse me, I'm sorry.
And so then by doing that, we wouldn't be able to, you know, deal with the issues that we're having right now.
So what what you could potentially do is you could allow for dual use. And we would have to go through and ma- and change definitions within the text amendment that we have in front of you. But you would basically create, have the regulations related to medical and dual-use licenses and not standalone adult use licenses. That would, that would be the way to do it. Because you would differentiate, you could move forward. Um, but then, but you you do, you know, the thing with that is that you run the risk of um potentially just the, the, the licenses coming out for adult use and adult use only in social equity, and then you're holding up the process at a later date while you actually go through and make, do the rule changing. So that's, that, that's the risk that you run um by doing that. But that, that would be the way to do it.
Commissioner Cassidy has come in.
Hi, um, I am going to go ahead and reiterate what I said before a little prematurely, but I'll, I'll be a little more concise this time since I've already stated it. I would support um most of the proposed amendments to the UDC. The changes that I would support uh as far as the setbacks go would be to remove the setback from uh churches and also other dispensaries, but to keep all of the other setbacks at a thousand. So that would be reducing the substance abuse facility from two thousand to one thousand and then maintaining the others at a thousand. Um, and the reason for that is, as Commissioner McBride stated, which was echoing what I had said earlier, if you go too far in loosening it up, you can't tighten it back up again. It's just impossible. But if we find that it's too restrictive, we can always come back and loosen it up some more. And I'd really like to um thank all of our public speakers. I appreciate especially what um Mr. Gibbons and Margie had to say. Youth are very impressionable. As a mother of four boys, two in middle school, two in high school, uh, I'm very aware of the pressures that they're under and um how easy it is to influence them. And they do deserve some protection. I think that they are worth the effort. Five hundred feet, that's a two-minute walk. People are lazy, but most people will walk two minutes to get somewhere. If you make them walk five minutes, they might think twice. So I think that uh keeping it at a thousand opens it up for these businesses to find appropriate locations, but still provides enough separation from those sensitive uses like schools.
Uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Fink.
So again, I'd like to to respond to both uh Ms. Cassidy and Ms. Bride Olsen. Because I'm not sure what expanding the separation distance is going to accomplish. School kids are not gonna be able to go to a dispensary to buy product. That's just not going to happen anymore. And school kids can go to a liquor store and buy booze, at least. You know, you have to be twenty-one and most places are responsible and they're gonna card you because they don't want to lose their license. The idea that out of sight, out of mind, I understand where Mr. Ortiz Pino is coming from, but they already they already know about pot older kids. Um, and they probably know where they can buy it if they want it. And so again, I'm just not, I just, I haven't heard any, what the dangers are going to be. It's not as if there's gonna be a bunch of people standing outside of a dispensary, smoking pot and offering it to school kids walking by, whether it's a two-minute walk or a five-minute walk or whatever. That's just not going to happen. So, um, and I think then by having this larger separation, we're not gonna be able to solve some of the problems that we're having now in terms of um parking and impacts on surrounding neighborhoods. You're not gonna be able to solve both um this way. So, um, I would support five hundred feet from the schools and five hundred feet from a a drug rehab center if that's the, if the rest of my colleagues like that. And I could even see a thousand feet from another dispensary, though. Again, I don't think that's gonna be a problem. But I can't support raising it from, to a thousand feet for schools and a thousand feet to libraries and a thousand feet to parks. Um, I just don't see what's that accomplishing, except maybe to make somebody feel good, but it's not going to solve. It's not gonna solve anything. So, that's what I have to say. So, um, that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Ortiz Pino had his hand up first and then. Did you have another question?
I didn't, I just didn't know it for a second.
Okay. Commissioner McBride Olsen?
Commissioner Fink, I'm gonna beg to differ with you again. You know, I think you're being a bit naive um when you're saying there, you know, this isn't gonna cause any, any more problems that, you know, that, that, the legality of whether or not a, a, a junior high school, school kid can walk into a dispensary and buy something isn't the point any more than it is a point of having a, you know, a, a liquor store right next to a school. I, I just, I just feel like, you know, there, there certainly can be lots of social unintended consequences from opening it up too much too early. I, I do, I do completely understand the need to expand uh the locations that are available to these uh businesses. Um, and that's why I was suggesting the same thing that uh Commissioner Cassidy was suggesting, that um we consider, you know, going to a thousand-foot distance for some of the, some of the use uh uses. And eliminating the others because that still opens up probably at least four times as much opportunity as they've got right now. And, you know, and if we need to revisit it sometime in the near future, uh, do so. But, you know, I, I've watched, I've been on the planning commission for a lot of years now and I've seen how, how hard it is, actually, it's impossible to tighten something up. Especially with uh when you, you know, you can get people claiming impacts on property values, but um over trying to tighten it up. Um, I, I just think it would be better to err a little bit on the side of caution when you see all these other locations in other states, keeping their distances at a thousand feet, uh even though the state has said five hundred. Uh, I don't see anywhere in in Phoenix happening at five hundred feet at this point. So it's just to reiterate my point. And then I'll be quiet now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Cassidy?
I just wanted to make a point of clarification because Commissioner Fink has referred to what I've suggested as an expansion of the setbacks. And it's actually a reduction of one, an elimination of two, and a maintenance of the remainder.
Could you restate what you, your suggestion?
Yes, my suggestion was to eliminate this eliminate the separation between other dispensaries and churches to reduce the substance abuse facility separation from two thousand to one thousand and to keep schools, childcare centers, public parks, and libraries at a thousand.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioners with comments?
I, I have one. I don't know how to raise my hand other than this way.
Commissioner Papier?
Ye- yes, I, I'm uh leaning on the conservative side. Uh, I was, my computer was sort of digitizing and breaking up, so I didn't get to hear with the attorney. Uh, I, I, I heard most of what she said, but I didn't hear her name or 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 who she was there on behalf of. But I did catch, I was able to get a, a, a lot of what she said and and I, I concur with her. I mean, I think there's so much that we don't know and that this feels rushed. It there, it, it's, you know, once we, once we let the genie out of the bottle, it's gonna be very hard or im- impossible as uh as Commissioner McBride Olsen pointed out, to restrict it. I understand there are, that there are complications that exist at the moment, but if we rush this through and and we don't take things into, certain things into consideration, we, and have more knowledge. For example, the, the, the social equity licenses, they've not created, as I pointed out earlier, and 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 or or defined. And I, I think waiting in order to see, to obtain more information, uh, it is a very good idea and that this should be put on hold or moratorium or some, some, something to that effect until we do have that information. If I understood correctly, there's not, even the, the applicants are, are going to the there are, there are other bottlenecks in the process that are gonna take place anyway that that may pre- prevent what we do today. Or, you know, if if we pass this, it may prevent what we want to do from happening anyway. Um, uh, you know, we all want the final outcome to be optimal, but at at this juncture, I think it feels rushed. I I agree with McBride Olson, uh completely disagree with Commissioner Fink. And um, I I I think that there there are important
Oh.
Just a uh right Olson's point about there are, oh, sure, there are other, there are other places that 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 just don't consider the kind of setbacks that we're talking about. Thank you. I apologize for going over.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz Pino.
So I I feel like I I missed part of Commissioner Papert's uh last statement, but um I I feel like I would support um a reduction in the current regulations. Um, you know, I, me personally, I'm okay with going to the five hundred that has been proposed and recommended previously. But um, it seems that, you know, if there are I would, I would, I see the point of going slowly and being more conservative and instead of letting the cat out of the bag and trying to produce it later, which you can't do. Um, but again, I want to get back to the social equity license. That's my main concern here is because I feel like we need to, we're at a point now where we need, where we can have an influence on that social equity license. And and if we can put a more time on the adult use or not moratorium, but uh even a temporary halt, then that would give us more time to decide and be able to influence um what happens later with the rules. Sorry, that was very clear. It's kind of rambling. Sorry.
Thank you. Uh, any other commissioners? I I firstly, I think I agree with uh commissioners that I think that um setbacks should be a thousand feet from substance abuse in schools. So at this time, I'd like to, I think, play a discussion, like to open up for a motion to vote on a recommendation of the medical adult marijuana use. Medical use, sorry, medical adult use marijuana text amendment to mayor council. May I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Ms. Cassidy.
Uh, I move that we forward a recommendation of approval on the amendment with a few modifications to the amendment as proposed by staff, and that would be to I've got notes here. I apologize for the pause. Um, Mr. Bersak had mentioned changing some of the language on the expansion trigger for the odor mitigation plan to match other uh triggers within the UDC at the twenty-five percent expansion. So I'd like to propose making that change to the draft. And I would like to propose that the setbacks in the draft be changed to schools, childcare centers, substance abuse facilities, public parks, and libraries at a thousand feet and no setback from churches and other dispensaries.
Could I offer a friendly amendment?
Yes.
And I don't know if it's necessary, but I think there are a couple text changes. Dan was gonna change establishment to facility on the land use and then do a separate land use for medical cultivation. Is that correct, Dan?
Um, that is, Chair Martin, that is correct. Yeah, those were the two that we had discussed.
So they're related to the text.
I would accept that friendly amendment.
I guess I should have asked for a second first. I'm sorry. I have a second to this motion.
I'll second.
Okay, now I'd like to ask if I could have a finally text amendment amendment to the motion to add the text to to text items.
Yeah, I accept that.
Uh, Commissioner McBride Olsen.
Um, do I need to second that?
I I think you need to accept the
I accept it. Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Discussion.
Well, I would like to add a friendly amendment to that as well, to the to the motion at hand to put a temporary halt on uh social equity licenses for uh adult use.
Commissioner Cassidy.
Um, can I have uh Daniel Bersak just give a really brief explanation one more time as to what the impact of that would be?
Um, yes, of course. Commissioner Cassidy, um, so ultimately what would happen is you would put the restriction on the um adult use only for the time being. Um, and then what would, what would occur is that once we, once we um know what those rules are at state level, um, we would go back and have to do another amendment um to allow for those um for those uses. So we bring it back to the planning commission, go through the public process again, um and then make whatever changes need to be made. Or, you know, it would give us, basically, it would, I I suppose, give us time to um figure out if there's anything we can do within our regulations to to um have some sort of influence over that process. Uh, the concern that um, the concern would be just the fact that um the state has moved quickly in the past. Um, it's possible that they could move quickly. Um, and uh if 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 we don't have the rules in place, it makes it really difficult to approve the zoning, which you need for an application. Um, let alone, uh, you know, any of those locations, they 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 wouldn't be able to go in any location. So you could potentially hold them up. That 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 would be the concern that we that we would see with something of that sort.
Okay, and we're talking about twenty-six of these statewide. Is that correct?
So that's that's correct. It's twenty-six statewide. I think, you know, it it depends on what the rules are and where they go. Um, probably thinking two to four in the city new ones that might be coming here.
Okay, I'm going to decline to accept that amendment.
Okay, uh, we have a motion to the second.
I have a question first.
Okay.
Um, related to that, uh, Dan, um, is it my understanding then that dual-use dispensaries would still be able to move forward if the zoning were changed tonight? So you'd be, you'd you'd be making it essentially so you've got, still have a two-tiered system where certain dispensaries that have a dual use that are already ready to go would be able to move to these new spaces and you'd be holding back both the uh potentially the adult use only as well as the equity license uh folks that would get that in the future. Is that correct?
Yeah, so uh, Commissioner Young, yeah, so that's that's kind of what you would do. I mean, if you if you move quickly, it's not an issue. Um, but I I really, yeah, you would, you would allow for dual use to go forward. Um, you would allow for medical facilities to continue with whatever regulations we create for them. Um, if you just wouldn't allow for those new adult use only, essentially standalone adult use, which is the marijuana establishment only licenses um in the city of Tucson until we went back and made those changes. That's that's essentially what we do. And then those changes could be reflective of um those new laws and, you know, how we support them. It could be incentives. It could be whatever.
And then the equity licenses, I I don't know that I understood this exactly either. So if if I'm gonna apply for an equity license or whoever is is moving forward with that, they need to say in their application that they have a location picked out for their business in order to get their license approved?
So, um, Commissioner Young, we're not entirely sure. Um, that is what is required. That had, that is what has been required in the past, so we can kind of think that that's probably what's gonna happen, but I I, you know, we don't really know the application process at this point, so we're not sure.
Got it, because I mean, that that concerns me. I I'll just say I I share the concerns of some of the other commissioners about the social equity licenses, but I'm also concerned that with some of these amendments that we're making, um, I I just feel like there are some consequences that may be unintended that are actually going to further hold back the social equity licenses. So uh, for me, it's really hard to kind of parse you know, putting a, putting a, putting a moratorium completely um on this so that, you know, all of the um, so that these changes don't happen and everybody is essentially frozen in place until the social equity licenses.
That amendment failed, so.
What's that?
That amendment failed. The maker of the motion didn't accept it.
Right, but I mean, even still with these other amendments, I, to me, it feels like there are potentially other unintended consequences that could hold back social equity licenses. So I, you know, for, I I guess I'm just having a hard time parsing out, you know. Again, I share the concern about um the social equity licenses and not putting them at a disadvantage, but I think based on all of the information I've received tonight, the amendments that have been put forward, um, you know, it's, to me, it's just really hard to parse out whether or not actually if we just move forward with the uh what staff is suggesting, if that's not actually more advantageous for equity licenses than um what some of these a amendments is amendments are proposing. So I guess I'm just saying I I'm still a little bit confused um a about kind of what we're doing here and what we're trying to do and whether we're actually doing the right thing. So.
I think at this point, we're moving forward with the proposed text amendments with the revised setback requirements. So we have a motion to the second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, those opposed say nay.
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 Can we get a a roll call?
Hold on, hold up one second. Okay. Um, Chair Martin.
Aye.
Um, uh, Commissioner Fink.
Nay.
Um, Commissioner Cassidy.
Aye.
Commissioner McBride Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Papert.
Nay.
Commissioner Young.
Nay.
Uh, Commissioner Ortiz Pino.
Nay.
Uh, Commissioner Lucia.
Nay.
Okay. Um, motion moves forward without a recommendation with a vote of three to um five.
Thank you, Dan. What's that we'd like to?
Can I have a, can I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner.
About about what just happened. Um, will that uh, no recommendation be forwarded with a record of the motion and, you know, what, and basically, will it, will mayor and council see what we were discussing? Or will it simply move forward as a no recommendation?
No, we'll, we'll put the discussion in the staff report, but it will be a a no recommendation. The discussion will be in there. Uh, when we discuss this with them, either in study session or at the hearing, I'll spend some time on this, discuss the uh the discussion the planning commission had regarding the setbacks, regarding social equity, so that they will have that information uh to take into consideration when they have their own deliberations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I think the commission would agree that we want the courage, the city to participate in the state. They called it a discussion with the, about the social equity. That's a fair statement.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next item is item number four.
Uh, excuse me, um, Chuck. Uh, if I can ask a question, and I know this came up before, and this is really different than how the the county planning commission works. Um, and this is the fact that we've had a motion, it failed, and there's no opportunity to come up with another motion. Um, and apparently, if I remember right, it was explained, yeah, that's how the rules are. But I would just ask then, that I know staff has looked at revamping the rules for the commission. I think this would be one of them because it kind of puts um the commission at the mercy of the first person who is able to put forward a motion to get a second, and then that's the end of it. Now, I'm not sure if the five of us who voted nay are voting nay for the same reasons or not, but I think it's problematic to go, oh, well, the commission didn't come up with a recommendation. It's three to five and and that's where we go. So I would just ask that, I think, um, the two changes would be is one, there the the opportunity to have additional motions if the first motion fails. And the second one, if a motion doesn't garner seven votes but gets the majority of the commissioners present, that it goes forward as a positive recommendation, which is also what the county occurs with the county planning commission. So I would just ask that because this, um, it just seems kind of a little absurd that we end up not making a recommendation just because of the weird way our rules are.
Thank you. Next item is item four, PDF stat, PDFD staff announcements. Would staff please?
Uh, yeah, good evening. So uh, just some internal operations of PDSD, our new permitting system uh will be online here in about sixty days in June, so we're excited about that. We are bringing on new staff. We were authorized eight more staff by this city manager back in December. So we're well in the hiring process, and once we get there, that'll bring our numbers up to sixty-four, which will be helpful. Uh, we are seeing record levels of development in the city of Tucson right now. It looks like we're gonna hit about eight hundred and sixty million dollars in construction valuation, which is the highest that uh we can tell we've ever had. So the city's booming. You're gonna be busy. Uh, uh, and in regards to uh Commissioner Fink's question, I'm gonna discuss that with our attorneys and staff and see if we can just bring back a very small amendment towards a simple majority that allows a recommendation to move forward as as opposed to just canceling the recommendation uh for a couple of reasons. One, so you get a recommendation out of the planning commission. But two, you just spent a study session and about two and a half hours to arrive at a position with no recommendation, and that's not your fault. That's the rules' fault, the way they're written now. I don't know how we came up with that in the past, but I'll I'll seek to make that change. So hopefully in the next few months, I can get that back to you.
Thank you.
You betcha.
I think that was based on thirteen members, so, you know.
And that would be the largest planning commission in the state of Arizona, thirteen members.
We're number one. Uh, any other items in the uh staff? Uh, next item is uh future agenda items.
Um, yes, uh, Chair, Chair Martin, so um, enter gov uh process improvements, which you reviewed last time um at last week. Uh, we're looking for a public hearing on, I believe it's April seventh, moving forward. We still have our informational presentations, which we'd like to do, maybe even in person at some point. Um, and uh, a little further on on down the road, um, we are working right now on accessory dwelling units and an amendment that would allow for those um in certain areas of the city or in the city. Um, and that may would be coming, but not for a couple of months or so.
I heard that was coming in June.
Potentially in June.
Um, are, do we look at the fees? Are the fees being revised or?
Um, Commissioner Martin, so the fees uh are in our administrative manual. Um, and so that that actually, it's a public hearing with mayor and council. It needs to be posted for sixty days and then it goes to a public hearing with mayor and council.
Okay, thank you. Next item is item number six. Call the audience and it's time for anyone in the audience to speak to the commission about items that aren't on the agenda. Um, is there anybody that would like to speak to the commission? Just raise your hand. Seeing none. Oh, Margie.
Just very quickly, thank you so very much for having this public hearing tonight. It is very much appreciated. As a community member, I really appreciate it. Thank you. As a community member, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Item number seven is adjournment. I'll entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move re-adjourn.
And also, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Passover and a happy Easter. Whatever your proclivities are, seeing we won't meet until after the holidays, so enjoy the holidays.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Thank you, everyone.
All those in favor, say aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you, planning commission, for your dedication and volunteerism. Have a great night.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.